Good morning and welcome back. We had a closed session, and in closed session, the board discussed and/or took action on the following legal matters: Kayla J. versus State, Marques versus State, Vista Charter Public Schools versus State Board of Education. And we're going to start with item 16 this morning. Item 16 is the California Community Schools Partnership Program update with presentations by the CCSPP State Transformational Assistance Center and the Southern Inland Regional Technical Assistance Center. This is an information item, and it will be presented by Pete Callis. Hi, Pete, how are you? And Hamad Razawi of the CDE. Please begin.
Good morning. Good morning, Isasa. Yeah, all right. Thank you, President Darlene Hammond, board members, Chief Deputy Nicely. Thank you for having us here this morning. We're here to present the annual update, along with some presentations from our State Transformational Assistance Center and one of our Regional Technical Assistance Centers. So between the 2021 and 2022 state budgets, California allocated over $4.1 billion to the California Department of Education to establish, expand, and support community schools through year 2031. CDE administers three grant programs to fund LEAs for their respective community schools programs and contracts to support technical assistance and the evaluation of the CCSPP Our local educational education agency grant, CDE received over $287 million to administer two rounds of planning grants. In 2022, we funded 192 LEAs with over $38 million. In 2023, we funded 226 LEAs for planning grants with over $44 million. CDE also received 70% of the 2021 funding CCSPP funding to administer multiple rounds of implementation grants. Implementation grants have a five-year grant period with up to $500,000 per school site per year. In 2022, Implementation Round One, we funded 458 schools and 76 LEAs for a total of over $625 million. In 2023, Implementation Round Two, we funded 570 schools and 128 LEAs for a total of $750 million. CDE has almost $600 million set aside from the 2021 funding to administer Extension Grants beginning in 2025-26. The Extension Grants are approximately $100,000 for up to two years for implementation grantees after they've completed their implementation grant funding and administration of those funds. There was a typo in the board item on the dates. The Extension Grants are to begin in 2025-26. The board item had 2024-25. So there was a typo on that. So community schools, infrastructure, and evaluation. CDE has received over $140 million in contract for technical assistance through 2031. The State Transformational Assistance Center is contracted for a three-year contract with two renewals of the three-year contracts for approximately $28 million. The eight Regional Technical Assistance Centers have the same contract structure, three years per contract with two renewals. These contracts range from $12.5 million and up to $22 million. Another area of support for the community schools grantees is through the $140 million for coordination grants for county offices of education. County offices will receive between $200,000 and $500,000 annually for seven grant cycles if they have two or more community schools grantees within their county. Currently, there are 52 county offices of education funded with just over $31 million for the coordination grants. The coordination grantees will commit to coordinating county-level governmental nonprofit community-based organizations and other external partnerships to support community schools' implementation for grant recipients in their county. The purpose of this program is to help build the capacity of local education agencies to plan, implement, and coordinate community schools with their communities. CDE also receives approximately $742,000 annually to support our community schools office, to work with our State Transformational Assistance Center, our Regional Technical Assistance Centers, and directly with the LEAs. Finally, to evaluate the community schools program, there is approximately $2.5 million to conduct an annual formative evaluation. This is to be completed through the request for proposal process. So we're right in the middle of having our RFP go out, and we're in a situation where we cannot discuss anything dealing with the RFP right now. That was from legal and our contracts office direction that we received. So I can't go any further on our RFP right now. Our CD priorities to date is our CCSPP staff is completing the 2023 Annual Progress Report. We're also supporting LEAs to manage and maintain their budgets for the community schools programs. We coordinated the funding of the Cohort II grantees and the coordination grantees. We manage and maintain contracts for the TA providers, working through that, along with staff support for the STAC with the development of resources and reporting documents for the CCSPP grantees. So just a brief overview, this is what our RTAC map looks like, and on the right is a breakdown of each of the regions and the counties that they are supporting. And then finally, this is what some of the websites look like that our Regional Technical Assistance Centers have developed to support their regions, to communicate with their regions. So these are four of the eight Regional Technical Assistance Center websites. I'll now pass the mic over to Hamad Razawi to take you through the rest of our presentation.
Thank you, and it's an honor to be presenting to all of you. I'm joined by three of my staff from a very newly formed office. Thank you so much for their work, and again, it's a pleasure and an honor to be before you. I will talk about the projects that we have right now and moving forward. So the first one would be an RFA. This will be released this coming Monday, November 13th, will be due February 9th, 2024. Our LEAs will have more time this year than they did last year. This timing will allow all sites and planning grantees to apply, and it will give us the CDE sufficient time to review every application by at least two trained readers, and we will be back before you in May. Applications, just to show that they are ready, will require school-level artifacts. Three of them are briefly mentioned here: a community asset mapping and needs and gap analysis, a shared decision-making council, which includes rosters and minutes from at least two meetings, and an implementation plan that's informed and aligned to the framework that you have already approved. We listened to the field and to the comments and to the LEAs and to the legislators and added a very small category to our funding level. So I am going to pause just for about five seconds so you could see this. The bottom five categories were here last time. The very top, the very small category of 10 to 24 students, is the one that we have added in response to the feedback that we have received in order to help our very small schools of 10 to 24. Some of our other projects coming up, the implementation grants that I just talked about that will be released on Monday. We want to help our districts in LEAs as much as we can, so we will have webinars for them. We will score the applications methodically and meticulously from February until March, and we'll be back before you to SVE in May 2024. Our APR, as Director Callis already talked about it, for Cohort One, it is due this month, 30th of this month, and we're in touch with them and supporting them every step that we can. My little newly formed office, we have started collaboration within CDE divisions and will continue to do so. We have already met with our special ed office, but we will also meet with our multilingual early childhood and expanded learning. We even have collaborations with outside agency, namely Department of Healthcare Services, with an initiative called CYBHI or Child Youth Behavior Health Initiative. And our guest speaker from San Bernardino County Office of Education will talk about that in greater detail. The last two items, our staff is working right now to create the first formative evaluation that's due to legislatures by the end of this year, December 30th. And the last one is what Pete just talked about, which is that we're finalizing the formative evaluation. This will be an external evaluator through an RFP. And now it's my great honor to introduce our two guests. The first one was the set of first one will be from our STAC, State Transformative Assistance Center, Dr. Powell and Mr. Michael Essien. And after them, it will be our colleagues, wonderful colleagues from San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools and Southern Inland RTAC, Dr. Houston and Ms. Jennifer Gately.
Good morning, State Board of Education. It's a pleasure to be here today on behalf of the State Transformational Assistance Center to talk to you about the work we're doing as the STAC to really support in the reimagining of public education. My name is Dr. Sean Powell. I have the privilege of serving as the Senior Chief of Student Services for the Alameda County Office of Education, and I'm here today with Michael Essien, who serves as our Executive Director. We represent the STAC, which is a combination of four agencies, including the Alameda County Office of Education, the National Education Association, Californians for Justice, and UCLA's Center for Community Schooling. With our time today, we'd like to focus in sharing updates around three core things: our work around realizing the California community schools' vision at scale, the current system of supports that we have in place, and then finally to share with you some critical next steps that we're working on within the STAC. Last year, as the community schools' work began in California, the STAC really began our work in building some foundations, and by foundations, we worked to establish the California community schools' framework. That framework is grounded in what we call the four-by-four: four pillars, four key conditions, four cornerstone commitments, and four proven practices, which we believe are essential in the efficient, effective implementation of community school strategies. As the STAC, we are really thinking about transforming education, and specifically transforming education through systems and social change. We believe that in doing this, we are able to radically reimagine what's possible for students and families and really operationalize and reach equity within education. Grounded in communities' needs, assets, and assessments, we believe that work must be done to address mental models, relationship connections, power dynamics, policies, practices, and ensuring that we have alignment of resources at the local level, our school sites, but also the county level. And so the addition this year of the county coordination funds that we're seeing in county offices is critical in our ability to coordinate local county government resources, as well as the work and partnership that we have with the CDE and SVE to look at how we continue to align the allocation of resources as well as policies. Together, our advisories, the STAC, the COEs, RTACs, LEAs, charters, and schools work together to form a collective cohesive system of support grounded in a collective impact strategy. That strategy is grounded in five key conditions and five core strategies. Those conditions include ensuring that throughout the system of support, we have a common agenda, that we have common understandings around how we are measuring our work, that we have independent roles and responsibilities, but that they mutually reinforce each other, that we have continuous communication at every level, and also that we have backbone support. The strategies must be and continue to be grounded in the data context and target solutions, and that we're looking at not only addressing supports and services, but that our work is really grounded and focused around systems change. Shifting power within our systems and support by listening and acting with our community and ensuring that we build equity, leadership, and accountability at every level of the system of support. On this slide, what you're able to see is the distinction of the roles and responsibilities by each of the entities and each of the groups within the system of support. As these entities engage in their independent but mutually reinforcing activities, we work to ensure that we align on the what, how, and why of community schools. We're also looking at collectively how we work together to sustain community school strategies through nested investments, looking at the collective initiatives through not only the Department of Education, but also our partners at the state level in the Department of Healthcare Services, the Department of Managed Healthcare, and other state-level entities who are currently leading initiatives to really support students, not only in the community, but also in schools. Collectively, this what, how, why, and our thinking and planning around sustainability is the California way for how we do community schools. With that said, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Essien to talk to you about our system of support.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and good morning to the board. I want to share a few items. One, the STAC. What do we do as supports for rolling out the implementation of the CCSPP? I put the webinar in here first as the beginning conversation because we had not formed the RTAC in the beginning of this work. And so our first connection was informing the public through webinars around what the CCSPP is and possibly can be. And what you see here is an artifact that's connected to how we think about the scope of work as we engage the public, but this scope of work also drives how we support each other internally. So what are we talking about internally? The STAC has, at its core, community school fundamentals. What you see here are the overarching values in the nine-capacity building strategies. They are at the center of all the work that we are engaged in in terms of supporting the eight regions, whether you're a planning, coordinating, or implementation grantee. But you can see that there are some elements connected to the core strategies, where we have plan, implement, improve, and reflect. The community school fundamentals are designed for us to engage in a continuous improvement cycle conversation related to the information that we gather, because we believe at the core of the community schools are constant conversations to drive iterations and changes as conditions change on the ground. So what happens? The collective learning space. The collective learning space is the first space in which we engage all grantees. This space is for grantees only, whether you are a planning grantee or an implementation grantee, and we have designed a space to lean into the questions and the challenges that they face in trying to make meaning and understanding of the CCSPP. We have individuals in the collective learning space that show up that are peers for the individuals so that we can reduce some of the stress. There's a lot of stress when you start talking about reimagining schools and being innovative. There's stress that's connected to compliance, but when we bring in individuals to share the bright spots that are occurring at schools, like some people are ahead in this work, we're able to support, reduce the stress, and begin to drive the transformation in the collective learning spaces for individuals who have received the money to implement community schools. But the final piece around our collective learning spaces is the community of transformative practice. This is where the STAC and the RTAC engage in mutual understanding and learning around the implementation. And once again, you can see that there's a scope of work and dialogue. The STAC and the RTAC, this is not a professional development where we speak, we are the authorities. We are learning together as we attempt to address the issues that the various regions have based upon their complexities. Some regions have both rural and urban. Some regions actually have rural, suburban, and urban. So as we think about the elements of the CCSPP, how are we gauging as a professional learning community in the community of transformational practices with the RTACs? So we're learning what's happening on the ground, and we're getting feedback and conversation directed around the documents that are being generated for the grantees to implement and think about community schools. What are our next steps? Multiple measures. We are looking forward to engaging this conversation around multiple measures, and why? Because, why? Advance the overarching values by shifting the accountability discussion towards a holistic and local view of equitable student outcomes and community school implementation progress. What are we talking about? We're talking about expanding the notion of accountability. It is not just the fixed data that we get around absenteeism, around suspensions, SVAC scores. We're expanding accountability to include the local and community-based measures that are generated by community schools based upon their local context, whether you're rural, suburban, or urban. So we're thinking about a holistic approach that allows schools to be responsive to the particular needs of the grantees. But anytime you do change, it's how do you begin to do this? Where do you begin the conversation? And so this is where we lean into building the capacity of our RTACs to support the implementation grantees. So being able to have people lean into the annual progress report to rate themselves, not because this is going to be a gotcha moment, but this is going to be the beginning of the iterative conversation, the continuous cycles of inquiry, and so we can then drive the conversation on an annual basis to support the CCSPP. As I conclude my comments, the initiative alignment and sustainability is something that is very significant and important because we do know that the CCSPP funds, it's a one-time funding thing. So then, how do we nest or contain within the community schools' framework or strategy multiple education initiatives? We are engaged in that conversation. It's going to be heavy lift, but I'm highlighting here specifically the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, because the work that is being done by our Southern Inland NTAC, they will come forward and they will share this piece. We need to expand that support with respect to nesting and implementing aligned sustainability for the community schools model. And in conclusion, what I would say is the digital commons. Digital commons is where we take all of the documents that have been created by the STAC and that have been curated, that we feel are beneficial to us being successful with the California way around implementing the community school strategy. And so this is something that's uploaded, and the public can access these documents for use, and also they can go to video so they can have learning opportunities around community schools. And so with that, I'm going to step to the side so that I can introduce our distinguished colleagues from the San Bernardino County Office of Ed, and they also happen to double as the Southern Inland RTAC. Dr. Houston and Jennifer, please.
Good morning, State Board of Ed. We are so pleased to be here and really share with you the regional technical assistance approach and the progress that we have made to date. So again, we are from the Southern Inland Region, so we are from San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. I proudly serve as Assistant Superintendent of a branch called Innovation and Engagement at the San Bernardino County Office of Education. I'm with Jennifer Gately, who is right behind me. She will come up and join me in just a minute. So what we're going to cover today, very briefly, is just an overview of the Southern Inland Region and where we are today with regard to implementation of community schools' planning and implementation grantees within our area. Also going to touch a little bit on what was previously shared about collective impact, but really sharing with you what that looks like in action in the Southern Inland Region. So with that, here's a map of the state, which you are very familiar with, and you're very familiar. I listened to, one year ago, the State Board of Ed meeting when you were all acting on and discussing and sharing information about regional technical assistance within the state. So you know where we are, serving the largest geographic region of the state, and you can also see where we are statistically in terms of the numbers of grants that are operationalized within our region. The chart at the bottom shows the potential, and that's what I want to highlight in this map. The potential of this four-county region of Southern California, and also the representation that this region provides to the state. We have rural, suburban, urban, frontier, you know, think about blithe, needles. We have border cities, border communities. So that's all part of the footprint and the framework that we bring to our approach. So with that, we have assembled our core partners. So in addition to the county offices and their core partnership in our approach to RTAC, we also have our cross-sector partners. So you can see them listed here. We have Capacity to Impact, representing our evaluation element, and coming out of Claremont Graduate University. You can see the California School-Paced Health Alliance. So we have that Health and Human Services side to our partnership, as well as Los Angeles Education Partnership with that community-based organization, and that depth of knowledge and depth of experience of standing up and supporting all elements of community schools. So this slide talks about our collective impact approach, and so what we've been doing in San Bernardino County and Riverside County as two of the four counties represented in the RTAC is supporting each other through collective impact for at least a decade and a half. We've been working with cross-sector partners, including our Health and Human Services, public health, safety partners around our sheriff's departments, our law enforcement, our fire service, to really begin to transform our approach within our region. So we have some experience in collective impact and some experience in when we come together, we become so much more than the sum of our individual parts. And so that's really the approach that we're taking within our region. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Gately, and she's going to talk to you about some very specifics with regard to what we're doing. So Jennifer?
Thank you, Dr. Houston, and thank you, State Board of Ed, for the opportunity to share. As Dr. Houston said, really showing some examples of strategies that our Southern Inland Region Technical Assistance Center has operationalized, and knowing that there's great possibility to replicate some of these successes and the possibilities statewide. So what you see here is an example of collective impact in action, and this is where we really started with the end in mind as we launched our RTAC initiative with the partners that we knew were going to be crucial in meeting the needs of our students, families, and communities across the diverse region that Dr. Houston described. And you can see in this image that what we gave them was a box, a box that was very familiar. It was a lunchbox. And we started a dialogue with them about, we know when we have a lunchbox that there's usually a little person with that lunchbox saying, "Please put this inside of my lunchbox." And we stand on the outside as parents, families, and supporters, and we try to respond to the best way that we can. And school is very much the same way, and we invited our partners to look inside that box, to open that box, and to think outside of that box, because what they found in that box was only three things: a resource tool with leadership strategies that partners could utilize to connect the schools they were trying to support, a blank piece of paper with a story that was unwritten, and a pencil. And after that, simply an invitation to join us in the community schools' journey in our region, to write the story together for how we were going to make a difference in the lives of the students, the families, and the communities. lives of the students, the families, and the communities we serve. We started with our schools. We invited our partners day one to join us in our region, and that's evidenced in our partnership collaborative. So as we lobbied and extended from there, we knew that we could only connect our partners to our schools in the extent that there was a system there, and we really appreciate the State Board of Ed framework for community schools that allowed us to mobilize the community schools capacity-building strategies to that end. So we're going to highlight a few examples for you, one of them being how we created a system of professional learning, similar to what our STAC colleagues have created as a system for the state that we could mobilize at the regional level. So what you see here is an example in a growth iterative process of where we're at in that system of support for professional learning. A tiered continuum of support, beginning with foundational guidance and resources, and an intention to align statewide through the region and down into our county offices and schools. Moving up to Level One, providing a universal level of support that was grounded in coherence, as well as, again, the State Board of Education framework, resources, and documents for community schools. And then from there, really transitioning from those universal levels to more targeted supports that are adaptive in nature, and you'll hear in a moment as we highlight opportunities, really honing in on the transition at this point from the RTAC role to the coordination role with our county offices, so that we have that localized, contextualized fit, allowing us at the very top to mobilize those resources together to provide targeted supports for our smalls, our rurals, our outlying districts as we described, inclusive of our charter schools, so that we could work together in a continuum of support and provide as much assistance as a regional technical assistance center as possible. And then a second highlight, as we looked from professional learning to how do we take professional learning and mobilize collective priorities, goals, and actions in our capacity building efforts? We as an RTAC, again, mobilized assets in our region and the opportunity to model transformation through our Southern Region Student Wellness Conference. So this is an annual conference. You can see the journey of our conference has been a multi-year event, transitioning from coordinated school health focus to a focus on whole-school, whole-child, whole-community model, and then really leveraging the opportunity through the CCSPP initiative to align, integrate, and optimize our efforts with community schools and a through-line to the CYBHI initiative. And this allowed us to not only bring together educators, but cross-sector partners and practitioners in the same learning space, so that we could grow and learn together in that effort. So to that end, I'm going to return it to Dr. Houston, who's going to give us a little more information on that alignment effort through CYBHI.
So last November, when I was listening to the board meeting, I was so excited to hear Melissa Stafford Jones present on CYBHI. The reason I was excited was I had been serving on the Equity Committee for CYBHI for about a year prior to that. So the reason that I put my name in as a potential to be on the Equity Committee was because I knew, I knew the importance of those foundational elements that were offered and part of the work streams of CYBHI would be critical to the work that we were going to be doing in community schools. So I was excited to hear that, and as a result of the conversations that started on the Equity Work Group, and then the conversations that continued as Southern Inland Region RTAC, San Bernardino County Office of Education was identified, began to have more depth of conversation around what could be, what could be related to these huge and historic investments in two of the core industry sectors that support our students. So through those conversations, we've moved to action, and today we have Transforming Together. The goal and the vision is to have an anchor, which is San Bernardino County RTAC, that will help to really identify through demonstration what is possible when we work together and really integrate the investments that we have in our state. So you can see it's grounded in our governor's master plan for kids' mental health and also the CYBHI ecosystem working paper. So the work is around demonstrating how we can collectively create a universal toolkit, which is here, and really identify and align our technical assistance. So understanding that we're only focusing on two of the historic investments, we also understand that there are several, many more historic investments. So one of the things that we're doing through this work is also including and identifying the other investments. So when we begin to connect what we're doing to CYBHI, we're also looking at community engagement initiative. We're also looking at the investment in teacher residency. We're looking at the investment in how we are redesigning the workforce for not only our educators, but also for our health practitioners, so that we are opening doors and creating more onramps, so that we can actively recruit for diversity of experience and distributed expertise that can be part of the solutions that we are collectively coming together so that we can really, again, become so much more than the sum of our individual parts. So you can see the project that is Transforming Together has these three elements. One of the core pieces to Transforming Together is Collaborative Leadership Working Group. So our Collaborative Leadership Working Group includes representatives from all of our RTACs in the state, as well as our STAC, and then all of our Health and Human Services partners who are supporting CYBHI, as well as our community-based partners that bring in that family, youth, and community voice. So agencies such as the Social Changery, who have just, they, about six months ago, released their Youth at the Center report, using those calls to action and really integrating those calls to action with our pillars in CCSPP, as well as the work streams identified in CYBHI, so that we are working smarter, working together, and integrating the work. So that is a quick overview of what we've got started, and thank you for this opportunity.
We also have for public comment? I see the slide up, or? Yeah? Okay. Thank you very much. And so we will come back to you with questions, but right now, we're going to put up the public comment slide so that the folks can queue up if they'd like to call in to the phone number and use the access codes shown on this slide. And I want to first go to Allison Yoshimoto-Tari as our liaison for community schools. If you have any comments, if there are clarifying questions, we'll take those, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you. First, I just want to start with appreciation and applause for our team that came up from the Regional Technical Assistance Center today. Thank you for presenting. We clapped a lot for the kids, we have to clap for the adults, too. So I wanted to thank our CD team, our State Transformative Assistance Center, and again, Dr. Houston and Ms. Gately for coming today for the updates. I think it's exciting that 18 months after we started to push out these grant dollars, we have hundreds of schools that are doing this work. And I also wanted to thank you, Dr. Houston, for noting that this work is not new, that there have been schools that have been doing this work for decades. But the state investment actually acts as a catalyst that allows schools to, that have been doing this work, to do more. It also focuses on sustainability, and I'm especially heartened by the examples that you gave around how we're braiding and blending initiatives at the state level with CHYBI, we're working smarter, not harder, because typically, we leave that integration work up to individual schools, principals, and teachers, and they get it from all different places and departments, and they have to figure out how to put it together. So I think it's really heartening that we're modeling that at the state and at the regional levels, and most importantly, that it's reflective of the community's strengths that we're serving in our very diverse communities. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank you for attending to the very small schools and hearing the feedback, because our very, very small schools have different needs, and they deserve to have that sort of carved out for them as well. So thank you.
And as the other liaison, I'll just add on, and we'll come back with discussion that early on, there was a sharing of the four commitments and the four pillars, and there's four conditions, et cetera. But in those are conditions and commitments to things that happen beyond the integrated services and supports. The social-emotional learning, the restorative practices that are in the legislation and so on. So it's an important initiative, both for improving the way kids experience school from day to day in every part of the school and in terms of the extra services. It's wonderful to see it lodged, we'll come back around and have opportunity for discussion. And with that, are there any clarifying questions as opposed to discussion questions at this point? And if not, we'll go straight to public comment and see if there's any public comment in the room first.
Would the following individuals please line up at the podium? Steve Mc, sorry, the microphone in the back of the room. Steve McDougal, Lorraine Richards, Elvia Vazquez, Inez Rosales, Lucero Soto, Valerie Williams, and Angela Steegel.
Members of the board, good morning. Steve McDougal of CFT. I just want to dovetail on what I've heard and seen today and appreciate the effort being made to transform schools throughout California. Labor pushed the legislature and the governor to fund community schools over the next several years and get them going, and one of my character flaws is that I'm an impatient person. And although there's plenty of LEAs and schools out there taking advantage of the opportunity to transform our schools, I don't feel like there's enough. I feel like we need more, and we need to lean into our Ed Coalition partners, I'm not going to name names, but ACTA and CSBA, okay, I name names. But let's get those district superintendents and board presidents together and get community schools growing all over this state. The money's there, let's not leave it behind, and let's get going. CFT is ready to help, I assume CTA is too. Thank you.
Hello, State Board of Education members. My name is Lorraine Richards, and I'm a classroom teacher representing California Teachers Association. CTA is committed to successful implementation of community schools and believes the STAC, RTAC, and COEs must model the cornerstone commitments from the framework, especially shared decision-making. The STAC was specifically designed to partner with Alameda County Office of Education, the UCLA Center for Community Schooling, Californians for Justice, and the NEA to model shared decision-making and the shared power that is not driven or directed only by the entity of the system. Shared decision-making is much more than advisory, it is a commitment to authenticate shared leadership in all aspects of governance and operation, and that all interest holders must have genuine engagement in the decision-making to fill the lunchbox.
Good morning. My name is Angela Steegel, and I'm also a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association, and I would like to follow my colleague's comments by stating that, to date, it is unclear if all of the RTACs and counties receiving coordination grant funds have implemented authentic shared decision-making structures themselves. CTA looks forward to seeing the STAC, RTAC, and COEs not only strive to model shared decision-making as put forth in the community schools framework, but to also offer high-quality support and technical assistance to grantees that clearly articulates the powerful transformative nature of this collaborative and capacity-building approach for our students, educators, parents, and communities. Lastly, we look forward to supporting the efforts of our local associations to actively partner with our students, parents, and communities, while engaging with our districts in shared decision-making and equitable leadership as they apply for the Cohort III implementation grants.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias, Presidente Darlene Hammond, miembros de la Junta Estatal. Mi nombre es Elvia Vazquez, y soy una madre y también organizadora comunitaria con Sacramento Act del Distrito Escolar de Sacramento. También estoy con PICO California Educación para Liberación de So... y también soy miembro de la Asociación de California para el Futuro de Aprendizaje, una alianza estatal de organizaciones comunitarias y grupos de defensa que se centran en estudiantes, familias, comunidades de raza negra, indígenas, latinos, migrantes de bajos ingresos en todo el estado para fortalecer nuestras escuelas públicas. Apreciamos como el personal de departamento de la Junta de STAC ha integrado nuestros comentarios basados en la participación de los estudiantes, las familias, los socios comunitarios y los educadores directamente afectados en el desarrollo del programa de asociación de escuelas comunitarias. La relación auténtica, la confianza mutua y el poder de toma de decisiones compartidas son esenciales para mejorar el bien socioemocional y los resultados académicos de cada estudiante. Muchas gracias.
Good morning. Good morning, President Darlene Hammond and State Board members. My name is Elvia Vazquez, and I am a parent and a community organizer with Sacramento Act and Sacramento School District and a member of other California Partnership for the Future of Learning. A statewide alliance of community organizations and advocacy groups that center for low-income, Black, Indigenous, Brown, and immigrant students, families, communities of colors across the street who strengthen our public schools. We appreciate how staffs of the department, board, and the State Transformation Assistance Center have integrated our feedback, rooted in the engagement in directly impacted students, families, community, partners, and educators into the development of community schools and partnership program. Authentic relationships rooted in mutual understanding, trust, and shared power and decision-making are essential to improving the socioeconomic well-being and academic outcome for students. Co-creating transformational community schools takes all of us together, and students, families, community, partners, and educators. Parenting with all levels of our statewide system of support. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Valerie, and I'm a parent leader in Sacramento City Unified with SAC Act, PICO Ed Forlib, and the California Partnership. We want to share an example of the strength and beauty that comes from partnering with community and illustrates the heart of transformative community schools. Please check out and use the images, music, and poems from our 2023 Arts and Culture series. We commissioned 10 diverse California artists, many of whom are students, caregivers, and organizers for more than 100 applicants to create original artwork. Through the vision offered by our students, families, educators, and community partners, our artists show what we mean by community schools or shared power. Joy, belonging, and healing, we ask you to please display this artwork, prominently as an inspiration to all of us working to co-create schools of joy, belonging, and opportunity for all students. Thank you so much for having me.
Good morning. My name is Inez Rosales, and I am with Public Advocates in the California Partnership. We want to share our appreciation for the opportunity to collaborate with STAC by supporting grantees through online learning opportunities and sessions at the June Empower STAC Summit in San Francisco, providing feedback to the annual progress report template and sharing best-practice resources. These resources include our life-changing Schools for All Students Community Schools Toolkit in English and Spanish that was developed by the California Partnership's grassroots students, families, community-based orgs, and advocates, and allies from our broader network. It's available at our website, and we have a few hard copies with us here today. Co-creating transformational community schools takes all of us together, students, teachers, community partners, educators, partnering with all levels of our statewide system of support.
Is that it for in-person comments?
Yes, that concludes in-person public comment.
Do we see if there's any on the phone?
We have 12 callers in the queue. I will open up the phone line now. Good morning, State Board of Education. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now. Caller with the last four digits, 5129, you are now live, please start your public comment.
Good morning. My name is Sam Zekka. I'd like to...
Good morning. My name is Samzika Fades. I am a parent leader in Anaheim Union High School District, OCO, PICO Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. I am grateful and thankful for this opportunity to share with you my experience with community schools. I am honored to be able to help those parents who cannot be heard to envy their voice. As I become more involved, I see that impact parent involvement has in decision-making for the future of our kids. I have seen how connecting that bridge between families, educators, and community partners is getting us closer to becoming school and equal partners in planning discussions and implementing decisions. It is clear that transformation can only happen when students, families, communities, educators, and district leaders are authentic partners. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 8323. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. Myra Martinez with the Community Schools Learning Exchange. CSLEX has been working directly with both RTACs and LEAs across the state. Our comments today are from this on-the-ground vantage point. First, we would like to commend the department for launching its interdepartmental working group. Guidance about intersectional work is much needed in the field. We also strongly request that this work group identifies any gaps, for example, what support LEAs need in developing whole-child and community-connected classroom instructional approaches. In terms of the last round of implementation grants, we are hearing concerns from the field about the availability of funding to support a fourth cohort and ask that clarifications for both planning grantees and LEAs that did not receive planning grants be made so that potential grantees have a better idea of what they can count on. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 8508. You are now live. Please start your public comment.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Marita Benmodis and I am a parent leader in Anaheim Union and Anaheim Elementary School District with OCO, PICO, Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. We appreciate the receptiveness of staff at CDE, SPE, and the State Transformational Assistance Center to our feedback and partnership. Together we have improved the implementation grant, RFAs, to ensure greater access to lower-performing students. We urge the department, the STAC, RTAC, and County Office of Education Coordination grantees to continue to seek out and expand community partnerships, including with organizations that reflect and work directly with low-income, BIPOC, and multilingual students and families, students with disabilities and their families, and other directly impacted students and families to co-design, expand communities of practice, and capacity building across the street. Co-creating transformational community schools takes all of us, students, families, community partners, and educators partnering with all levels of statewide systems of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 9176. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Blanca Lascano. Soy madre leader en el distrito de Anaheim Union. Conoco Pico Ed For Lib California Partnership. Agradezco a OCO la oportunidad que me están dando por ser una madre que escucha y comparte cada experiencia que nos enseñan y aprendemos en cada reunión. Mi meta es seguir adelante y hacer que mi voz sea escuchada y mi participación en la toma de decisión sea valorada. Al igual que todos los padres de familia, ser una madre involucrada me da la oportunidad de alzar la voz no solo para mí sino para las madres que no pueden estar presentes. Estoy aquí en este espacio no solo por mis hijos sino por los hijos de nuestra comunidad. Para poder lograr un cambio significativo es importante empoderarnos creando relaciones y no quebrantarlas. De esta manera el objetivo de escuelas comunitarias podrá ser logrado de una manera más eficaz. Los planes que se desarrollen e implementen en colaboración con estudiantes, familias, comunidad, y educadores son más sostenibles en el tiempo. Nada sobre nosotros y nosotros. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Blanca Lascano and I am a parent leader in the Anaheim Union District with OCO, PICO, Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. I thank OCO for the opportunity they are giving me to be a mother who listens and shares every experience they teach us and we learn in each meeting. My goal is to continue with this work, make my voice heard, and my participation in decision-making processes valued. Like all parents, being involved gives me the opportunity to raise my voice not only for myself but for all mothers who cannot be present. I am here in this space not only for my children but for the children of our community at large. In order to achieve significant change, it is important to empower ourselves by creating relationships and not breaking them. In this way, the objective of community schools can be achieved in a more effective way. Students, families, community partners, and educators are all essential for co-creating schools of joy, belonging, and opportunity for all students. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 9354. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Jose Salapascador and I am a parent leader in Anaheim Union and Anaheim Elementary School District with OCO, PICO, Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. I'm excited to share with you all this morning a bit of my experience with community schools. When implemented well, community schools can be a place of joy, belonging, and opportunity for parents, students, and community, bringing services and resources to all students and families and informing them on how to be part of the co-creation, implementation, and sustainability of transformative community schools. Being part of the district and school site steering committee has been great yet challenging. As a parent, I've learned that I have a voice and that we can work together and provide the services and resources needed to succeed as a whole. PICO has guided me and built a better understanding of how this can be done. Students, community, partners, and educators are essential for co-creating schools of joy, belonging, and opportunity for all students. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 6008. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Karina Granados. I'm a community organizer with OCO and partnership with PICO Ed For Lib and the California Partnership. The current annual progress report asks schools to choose a subset of metrics to report on annually from the list of required outcome measures. We urge the department to integrate all applicable outcome metrics required in the RFA into the progress report. This data is critical to the process of continuous improvement and should be easily accessible to shared decision-making teams as they reflect and plan through integrating learning from their deep listening with interest holders, needs and assets mapping, and a holistic picture of school outcome data. We propose that these metrics be pre-populated in the APR by the department to reduce the administrative burden on schools and districts. This is critical to improving outcomes and closing equity gaps in every school and will also help us to better understand and evaluate the impact of community schools' approach to school improvement and transformation across the state in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 2920. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Voy a dar mi testimonio en español.
Buenos dias, señora. Buenos dias, señora. Soy intérprete y voy a dar su versión después que dé usted su versión en español. Gracias.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Amy Arellano Castro. Soy una madre líder en los distritos de Anaheim Union y Anaheim Elementary. Conoco, PICO, Ed For Lib, y California Partnership. Estoy muy emocionada por ser parte del cambio basada en relaciones transparentes, auténticas y duraderas. Independientemente de no dominar el inglés, he podido ser parte de tomar decisiones en los comités, no solo en apoyo a mis hijos sino en apoyo a todos los estudiantes. He abogado para que hubiera interpretación y traducción en las reuniones para que más padres puedan participar y que se refleje la diversidad de nuestra comunidad. Y a la vez estoy creando relaciones y puentes con los padres para motivarlos a que puedan participar en la toma de decisiones en sus escuelas sin que el idioma sea una barrera. Los estudiantes, las familias, los socios comunitarios, y los educadores son esenciales para co-crear escuelas de alegría, pertenencia, y oportunidades para todos los estudiantes. Nada sobre nosotros y nosotros. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Amy Arellano Castro and I am a parent leader in Anaheim Union, Anaheim Elementary District with OCO, PICO, For Ed Lib, and the California Partnership. I am very excited to be part of the changes based on transparent, authentic, and lasting relationships. Regardless of not being fluent in English, I have been able to be part of making decisions in my community and school committees, not only in support of my children but in support of all students. I have advocated for interpretation and translation at meetings so that more parents can participate and so that the diversity of our community is reflected in these spaces. At the same time, I'm creating relationships and bridges with parents to motivate them to participate in decision-making processes in the schools without language being a barrier. Students, families, community partners, and educators are essential to co-creating schools of joy, belonging, opportunity for all students. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 9260. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. I am Angelica Salazar, Senior Policy Advocate with Public Advocates and a member of the California Partnership. We urge the board, department, state, and regional assistance centers, and coordination grantees to clearly communicate to implementation grantees schools and LEAs the requirement to publicly present their annual progress reports to their school communities and districts. In addition, the following instruction from the Round 2 Grant RFA should be reinforced. Annual progress reports should be collaboratively developed and presented by each school's CCSPP Shared Decision-Making Team, inclusive of students, families, educators, and community partners. When reports and presentations are co-developed and co-presented by shared decision-making teams, they are building collaborative leadership to transform outcomes for students. Please prioritize the resources necessary to ensure annual reports and presentations happen meaningfully in the next round of reporting. Co-creating transformational community schools takes all of us together. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 8600. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning, President Darlene Hammond and members of the board. My name is Brianna Browns on behalf of the California County Superintendent. I'm calling to extend our appreciation to Pete Callis, Hamed Razali, and their team for their updates on the California Community School Partnership Program. In addition, we extend our gratitude to Dr. Sean Powell and Michael Essien on behalf of the State Transformational Assistance Center, and Dr. Stephanie Houston and Jennifer Gately with the Southern Inland Regional Technical Assistance Center for their presentations on the technical assistance structure and services being provided to grantees and their continued dedication to this program. County Offices of Education are fully invested in the transformational opportunities offered to students by community schools. As was highlighted in today's presentation, local coordination and planning is at the heart of the California Community Schools Partnership Program, and we look forward to continue to support this important work. Thank you for your time to speak today.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 7655. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Maria Gonzalez and I am parent leader in Anaheim Union High School District with OCO, PICO, Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. I am thankful for the opportunity to be a parent leader with OCO. What I have learned a lot, I have developed the tools to help other parents build their leadership skills. Now, my goal is being able to help other parents who like me face challenge to being part of the community schools committed in their school and their school district. We want to be included. Parent and student play a critical role in creating transformative community schools. When we share the power, something might can happen. Transformation can only happen when students, families, communities, educators, and the district leaders are authentic partners. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 0072. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Caller, you are now live. Please start your public comment.
Hello, good morning. My name is Maria Vallarta Flores. I am a parent leader in the Anaheim Union, Anaheim Elementary District with OCO, PICO, Ed For Lib, and California Partnership. I want to share with you my experience as a member of community school committees and how satisfying it is to see the participation of students, parents, educators, and members of organizations working together. I also want to share that belonging to OCO has helped me be a part of community school committees. Currently at Olive Elementary School, while we were in a meeting, I made the suggestion to connect directly with parents one-on-one by visiting them at their homes to be able to listen to their needs and to be able to explain to them the benefits, the programs that our community schools have for them. This Tuesday, November 7th, was our first day of visiting families in the community, obtaining very good results. I am sure it will be a great change for the benefit of our community. By working in joint coordination, a great transformation can be made. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Last caller with the last four digits, 8630. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Lucero Soto and I am a community organizer, parent leader with Sacramento Act, PICO Ed For Lib, and the California Partnership. There's a need for more capacity building to support the rollout and implementation of the work that the STAC, RTAC, and coordinating grantees lead in supporting, planning, and implementation grantees. In particular, districts need to have a shared understanding of community schools as a transformative approach to schooling. This requires collaboration to break down silos by leveraging the expertise of community partners and engaging district leaders across departments and directly with school leaders and teams. It also means providing intentional development for school site leaders and shared decision-making teams, inclusive of students, families, educators, and community partners. Engaging community organizations connected with students and families as key partners is critical to building a capacity to leverage this historic opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 16.
Thanks to everyone for all of that affirming public comment. And I'd like to open this up for board discussion if there is some. Again, this is an information item. Yes, Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Thank you for all the public comment and the presentation. It was such a comprehensive update of the California Community Schools, particularly highlighting the commitment to shared decision-making, which is fundamental to creating equitable and effective community schools. The emphasis of power sharing from the state level down to school sites is a significant paradigm shift, and when implemented faithfully, it has the potential to drive transformative change in education. I'm encouraged by the progress and the commitment outlined in the presentation. It is vital that we ensure the principles of transparency, accountability, and shared governance are upheld throughout this process. So my question is, how is the State Transformation Assistance Center modeling and demonstrating shared decision-making practices at the state level? And how can this model be replicated at the regional and local levels for a consistent approach?
Good morning. So me responding to the question was how are we modeling that at the inside of the STAC?
Right. And how can this model be replicated at the regional and local levels for this consistent approach?
So within the STAC, it's the structure of the STAC. It consists of four partners. There's Alameda County Office of Ed, UCLA Community Schools, Californians for Justice, and NEA, the National Education Association. The entities within that need to collaborate around content and methodology. And that collaboration takes many forms in terms of feedback, wrestling, jostling back and forth around what content particularly means. And then those documents are actually taken to focus groups. So like students and parents are actually engaged to give feedback around those documents. So when we start thinking about a document coming to the forefront, it has actually gone through multiple eyes. And even some people here on the state board have had opportunities to get some feedback on documents and within CDE. So when we talk about the production of something, the collaboration and shared decision-making around a content or a particular methodology, it has gone through multiple stakeholders. So it represents and reflects diverse interests.
And what I'll add to that is that I think at the outset, it's really recognizing that this work is grounded in a commitment to equity. And we know that equity work is both complex and complicated. And so being explicit about that as we engage in our partnerships and having a commitment to the healing work and the iterations of healing that needs to happen across partners is just as critical in the work, right? And that we're really not only focused on technical aspects of being in community and working together, but really attending to adaptive, the relational aspects and commitments and co-creating those and then a commitment to continuing to revisit them throughout the process as we focus on the humanity that is required to really collaborate and integrate in the ways that we're speaking about.
Okay, thank you for that. Because I'm really concerned about the structures ensuring that all school stakeholders, including students, families, staff, and community members, have that genuine engagement in the decision-making process as it was widely commented today by not only the public comment in the room, but on the callers. And that's just, you know, how are these structures ensuring that all the school stakeholders, including students, families, educators, are being included? And there's fidelity to that.
Sure. So one of the expectations as part of the community schools work is the introduction of a cross-systems advisory. And there's an expectation that we do have representation from all of those partner groups within the STAC structure. And so part of the capacity development strategies is that we really begin to continue to provide capacity development strategies around. Step one is getting those people to the table. And then again, it's the continuous efforts around teaching those adaptive skills in those spaces. And so we do have a commitment to that. We have one of our capacity development strategies is connected to that. And so as we engage in the process, we imagine that there will continue to be continuous growth and continuous conversations in that co-construction process and that our grantees are in different areas of that work depending on, you know, when they began their community schools process.
And I would like to say, I'm a believer in holding real conversation. Like, I think if we're going to build community, I think transparency has to be at the forefront of what we're talking about. Because we're really talking about stressing people out with reimagining schools when people have the sense of accomplishment and efficacy. The tension that is being surfaced is around the compliance around the money with the conversation around change. And we have not done enough work. And so this is what we're talking about within the STAC and with the RTAC. Like, how do we engage in the real adaptive conversations around mindset and the harm? So in the background of all of this building community, we had SFUSD's teacher union voting for a strike. We had Fresno unified voting for a strike. We had Oakland that avoided a strike. So we're talking about shared decision-making and sharing power in the midst of needing to repair harm as we talk about community schools. Because at the core of community schools means that we have this unconditional love and bond for each other. So I think the tension around how do we scale up is around the relationships that we need to repair. Because there are some spaces where this is being done amazingly. And we're hearing it from Anaheim. There's some other school districts. And so I think we need to lean into like how they repaired the harm to bring all parties to this. So I just want to be clear around what is really happening across California as we're trying to deal with the tension and adaptive change, which does take time.
Hi, I'm a member Yoshida Otori. Are there others who...? Member Lewis? Go ahead.
I just wanted to uplift what you just said, Dr. Essien. I think this concept of... It's a cornerstone commitment, right, to shared decision-making. And that in and of itself, it's not linear. It's not something that is, you know, step A, step B, step C. It's something that takes ebbs and flows. It's relational. It's based in human relationships and trust and honesty and conversation. And so to your point about it happening in certain places around the state, I think it'd be great when we get the update in May to... Like, as we had today, we had guest speakers from an RTAC to have folks that have been in this process, and I lived it in the district, at the district level, come to share about that with us at the state board. And maybe sometimes I think there's an inclination when you come to the board to speak about only the good things. But I think it's helpful to create a space for this work where we can talk about, like, these were some of the challenges we had. This is how we repaired the harm. This is what we did to build relationships up and where we are now and recognizing that it's not always point A to point B. Thank you.
Member Lewis? Yeah, and then Kim?
I was thinking of when the districts are going through the... Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, thank you. I feel like I'm muffled anyway because of this and my sinuses. So just briefly, when the LEAs are going through the planning stage, right, and we call for shared decision-making, there is accountability when you get to the implementation phase, right? Because you do have to map out how you engage your community. So there is a process for checks and balances for that through the system, correct? Okay.
That's part of the artifacts piece in the application.
Member Patilla Bronson?
This is actually a slightly different question. I was just wondering if you could talk more about the formative evaluation process that will be upcoming without getting crosswise of any of the RFP requirements, but more broadly, what, if you can sketch out more of what types of things you'll be looking for in the evaluation and also dissemination plans of those findings?
Pete, careful. You can only imagine how careful I will be, so.
It would be the facts that we do know, that we can share. It will be an external evaluator. It will be for the entire enterprise of CCSPP. So for the next seven years. And it will have yearly deliverable and then a culmination report for the entire CCSPP. I hope that's helpful.
Okay, so I'll give an example and you can tell me if it's within or without of bounds. So for example, the accountability that you were just describing is part of the assessment to look at the level of engagement and incorporation of community stakeholders, educational partners, as part of what will be determining whether this has been an effective intervention? And then secondarily, what is sort of the time scale that you're looking to impact student outcomes? We just had our CAS discussion yesterday. That is certainly top of mind for this board, but also I think for, you know, parents, families, the teacher community wanting to see what the connection between community schools and student outcomes in terms of learning are as well. And if that goes too far into an RFP, you can just say, no. Maybe I'll get back to you later.
If it goes too much into the RFP, we just want to be, as Mr. Essens said, as open as we can. We're working through all of that. We are completely aware of. We have a vision of what the external evaluator will need to do, but the details are what, as our office, we're working with our STAC, with our partners, like, what will that look like? That expression of building the plane as we fly it, but we're working on it right now.
Maybe I'll piggyback on that a little bit as another point of discussion. So, you know, we know that there are a number of things that are likely to improve student achievement, and they're kind of built into the image of what a community school might do. And some of those may be access to, you know, supportive services. But other things are expanded learning time, you know, the opportunity to use that time for tutoring and special supports for students, the development of an inclusive restorative climate in the school. Those things need professional development for the schools. They don't all know how to do it. And support to kind of get from here to there. And I guess part of the question is, you know, how are we helping schools, for example, build those features in? So for example, one of the concerns that have come up about community schools is that you can add a health clinic or you can add some, you know, counselors. But if the school itself is poorly staffed, not, you know, not responsive, not restorative, it's, you know, punitive. And there are, in our high schools, for example, only a third of kids who feel that they're in a caring environment. So you have to change the whole environment to get to what the point of the community school is. And you have to help people do it. There's got to be professional learning. So once we get everybody at the table, which is an important goal, then the question is, what are we doing around the professional learning and the professional development? And then the measurement of what kinds of things are being done for kids in the schools? And I'd love to hear more about that, both on the professional development side, which I know the TACs are working on, and on the way in which we conceptualize what we want to learn about.
Yeah, so I can speak to the professional learning side. One of the things that we identified in our presentation as a next step was the initiative alignment and sustainability work that we're doing. And part of that work is really connecting with our partners that are leading other initiatives that tie into this, right? So we have things like our CalHope, which is focused on the SEL components of it. We have 21CSLA. So we have all of these initiatives where there are capacity development, technical assistance, and professional learning aspects. And so what we're looking at is like not only aligning and how we're communicating to the field about this, but also aligning and thinking through the development of those resources and how we connect the development of those resources in a frame of the community school strategy. Because I think what we're experiencing and seeing is there are a lot of resources, tools, and more that can be created. But part of it is that I think in this implementation of community schools, we really have to reimagine the desilowing of how information is coming in, down and into the schools, right? And so we really see the community school strategy as the broader frame or the broader strategy in which these initiatives, the professional developments that are happening are happening through. And so beginning to understand like what is in existence and then how do we build upon that and then use the community schools frame to link those things together is, I think, part of what we're thinking about on the professional learning side of the House and really looking at our initiative alignment, working kind of group space and sustainability group space to engage in some of the conversations around what is the how of that in terms of the professional learning pieces.
And, you know, there are some, as you well know, spectacularly successful community schools in California that have really redesigned the way they do school. You know, we've had the opportunity at LPI to study some of them. So we've sort of seen the fact that it's not like just pulling in initiatives, but it's like actually integrating everything into a student-centered approach in the school. And it would be wonderful if in some part of this, we're helping those schools, holding up some of those very successful schools, which are getting strong outcomes because they've built these inclusive, supportive environments and added and pulled in, as you know, the blending and braiding of many things into that holistic conception. But it'd be great for schools to be able to learn from each other when we have those places to build on. And then again, to have that in form, as Member Patilla Bronson, I think, was suggesting, the way in which we do the evaluations and the way in which we do the feedback and the ongoing continuous improvement. It's a challenging task, but, you know, if we just end up with silos piling on top of each other, you know, like, oh, let's add another thing, let's add another thing, rather than helping people step back and see what the overall redesign of a school should be if it's really serving kids in a supportive way, it will be, you know, less successful than it might have been. Yes, Vice President Glover Woods?
My comment is really more of a request for one of our future updates. I would really, it would be very helpful for me to be able to see the ideas and the pillars and all of these pieces through the lens of a school. So if in a future update, if we can really look at a school, a community school, and hear about how all of these aspects are working together, who's in the school, what partners are in the school, how it's all tying together, that would be a very helpful next step update for me. As we've been watching the evolution of the community schools from the awarding of the grants, it was wonderful to hear from those who called in today as well as hearing from the STAC and the RTAC. But I'd really love to just get it down to the community school or schools a couple and just say, hey, this is what it's looking like and this is how it's working together and this is how it's impacting outcomes.
It'd be great to hear about that, both with the school level and then what is the district doing to really enable the schools to transform? And then what is the county doing as well to support that process? Because it's complicated. We know. You guys have a big complicated agenda to implement. Yeah, terrific. Member Olken?
I just wanted to first thank you all who presented today. It's an incredible project and initiative within our state. And just thinking from the level of our students and families, it's so important. And I appreciate, for example, Dr. Powell, you sort of reminding us that this is work about... It's restorative work. It's adaptive work. It's human work. Which, when you're trying to make change at a state level, sometimes that gets lost. And I just really appreciate you centering that. And then in terms of what we were just talking about, what might be a useful next step? I was thinking about how the, you know, what we're trying to do is create, is to transform schools. So it's community by community. And we're also trying to do it at the, you know, across the whole state. And so I appreciate the request to hear about work at a school level because we can't create what we can't envision. And also because that's where the real... That's where the work is happening, the real work is happening. And without all of the support and assistance and partnerships and desilowing of vested interests and agencies, and it's not going to change, right? And so I love the idea of being able to see, like, starting at a school level, this is what it looks like. And then here, take a step up from there. These are the supports that are in place. And here's the communities that were previously, or the organizations that were previously working separately who are now working together in collective impact. And here's how this relates to the vision we've created. So it's sort of like moving from the unit of change to the system that is being changed to support that. So, anyway, thank you.
With all of our enthusiasm, and I'm going to call on Member Ayapan. Then we'll try to transition. And thank you so much for all that you've provided for us, Member Ayapan.
Thank you so much for your presentation and just your work around shared decision-making. And you briefly touched on how you brought in students into this work, which I really loved. And this question may just be a request for a future update as the other board members were referring to. But specifically, I would love to know more about what you're doing or what successful LEAs are doing in bringing diverse student perspectives. And without all of the support and assistance and partnerships and desiloing of vested interests and agencies, and it's not going to change, right? And so I love the idea of being able to see, like, starting at a school level, this is what it looks like. And then here, take a step up from there. These are the supports that are in place. And here's the communities that were previously, or the organizations that were previously working separately, who are now working together in collective impact. And here's how this relates to the vision we've created. So it's sort of like moving from the unit of change to the system that is being changed to support that. So, anyway, thank you.
With all of our enthusiasm, and I'm going to call on Member Ayipan, then we'll try to transition. And thank you so much for all that you've provided for us, Member Ayipan.
Thank you so much for your presentation and just your work around shared decision-making. And you briefly touched on how you brought in students into this work, which I really loved. And this question may just be a request for a future update as the other board members were referring to. But specifically, I would love to know more about what you're doing or what successful LEAs are doing in bringing diverse student perspectives into these decision-making processes and ensuring that their voices are heard, you know, amongst adults who traditionally dominate those spaces. And I bring this up because it's so important when you're talking about reimagining schools. Because typically, you know, you look at students, they don't have much experience with the work that you all are doing, of course. But I think with that lack of experience really comes that imagination and ability to think outside of the box and think broadly without those constraints. And of course, not all of those suggestions or those ideas might be feasible or you're able to integrate them. But I think there's so much value in that perspective from students who are being directly impacted by that work. So I would just, I would really love to see that highlighted when we're talking about the school level and the district level. And, yeah, so that was, but thank you so much for all of this. And that was just something that I wanted to maybe see in the future as well.
So with eagerness for ongoing conversation, we so appreciate everything that you're doing. And thank you for this information item.
Thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a 15-minute break, maybe a 13-minute break at this time, and reconvene. And then we're going to try to go straight through. We have quite a number of our items. I'll just let you know we're about an hour later than we thought we would be at this point, so we're going to try to pick up the clip. Thanks. I either heard five or live. I think we're live. All right, we're going to ask for the public comment slide to go up so that we can do the waivers. There we go. I'd like to take up waiver consent items W-1 through W-12. And we'll open the phone line for the public comment queue. And we'll see if there's any in-person public comment. All right, and we'll give it a moment of wait time and see if there's any public comment on the phone. No public?
There are no callers. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Given that there's no public comment, I'll ask for a motion on consent items W-1 through W-12. May I have a motion? Thank you.
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you very much. And all in favor, show hands. All right, any opposed? No abstentions, motion passes, thank you. We're going to move on to item 17, which is the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter school pursuant to California Education Code Section 47605-K2. It is a consideration of the evidence to hear or summarily deny the appeal of New Pacific School, Yuba City, which was denied by the Yuba City Unified School District and the Sutter County Board of Education. And the item will be presented by Susan Park of the CDE. Hi, Susan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Board President Darling Hammond, Chief Deputy Nicely, and members of the board. My name is Susan Park. I'm the CDE Charter Schools Division Director. And it's still morning, yes. So today I will be presenting item 17 regarding the appeal from charter petitioner, the New Pacific School, Yuba City. So I'm happy to elaborate on any slide, but I will walk you through some of the highlights. So today, the board has the option in this first agenda, item 17, to hear the appeal or to summarily deny it just based on the record. CDE is recommending that the board hear the appeal and go on to item 18 for the following reasons. And just by way of background, this item was presented to the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools back in June of 2023, and it was voted to come to you. And on June 30th, the petitioner did request a postponement. So if you're having some déjà vu, it was removed from the July agenda and coming back to you here today in November. And then, let's see. Oh. I'm going to put this over here. Don't touch it anymore. Okay. And so this summarizes the ACCS. And then just some, a description about the petition itself. The petition proposes to open a new charter school that would serve transitional kindergarten TK all the way up to 12th grade, so all the available grades. It's described as a project-based, learning-focused school. And in the first year of operation, it would serve just TK to five with the projected enrollment of 100 students. And the petition was submitted, as noted in the slide originally, to the Yuba City Unified School District. And the petition was denied by the district in August of 2022. And as allowed, the petitioner did appeal the district's denial to the Sutter County Board of Education. And the county voted to deny the petition in January of 2023. So that takes us to today's appeal. And this summarizes the timelines of the appeal. But in sum, the petitioner met the timelines related to the state appeal. And so we get into the reason why CDE is recommending that you do hear the appeal today. And ultimately, the petitioner identified several reasons that the state board should hear the appeal, including allegations that the district and county did abuse their discretion. And these are some of the documents that were reviewed by CDE. Overall, based on CDE's review of the documents noted, CD recommends that the state board hear the appeal today. And that is item 17. If you have any questions?
Okay, so we're going to take public comment. But first, I'm going to turn to our liaisons, Member Olken and Member Glover Woods to set us up for the next part of the discussion.
Thank you. I just, quick comments as the liaison, just reminder that on this item, we're simply voting whether to hear or summarily deny the petitioner's appeal and that both the department and ACCS have recommended that we hear the appeal.
All right, and you're plus one on that? So we're going to go to public comment. We'll open the phone line. Those who want to call in can call into this number with the participant access code listed. We'll also take public comment here in person. As has been noted, this is a decision simply about whether to hear the appeal. People who want to make comments on the merits of the appeal and whether there's been an abusive discretion should please wait and comment on the next item, item 18. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment in the room?
There is one person signed up for public comment, Janelle Rulie.
Go ahead. Turn your microphone on, please. Is it on?
It's on.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Good morning, Board President Darling Hammond, State Board members. My name is Janelle Rulie. I'm with legal counsel for New Pacific School. We would simply ask today that the state board hear this appeal consistent with both the CDE's recommendation and the ACCS's recommendation. Thank you.
And there are no callers in the queue.
All right, so with that, we'll open for board discussion and a motion. Is there any discussion? Can I get a motion? Member Olken?
I move that we hear the appeal.
And a second? Thank you. All in favor, show your hand and say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, thank you very much, Susan. And now we're going to go to item 18, which is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter school pursuant to California Education Code Section 47605-K2. And this is the review of the appeal. And I will allow CDE to present its recommendation. Susan, please proceed.
Thank you. So as previously stated, both the district and county denied the petition and the petitioner appealed to the state board. And the relevant ed. code is cited. And the role of the state board in these matters would be to, as noted by the two bullets, to affirm the determination of the district or the county or both, or to reverse only upon a determination that there was an abusive discretion by the district or the county. And then, let me go to the, and the clarifications are, as mentioned in the comments, that these were part of the CDE discussion at the prior board item. Then the standard of review. So as already mentioned, the abusive discretion is the standard of review, and it is identified as the most deferential standard of review. And so it is not to reassert or re-review the local decision. And then finally, if there is one or more basis for denial that is supported by evidence in the record regarding this appeal, the determination to deny in CDE's recommendation would be to affirm. And CDE recommending that the board affirm today, the district was viewed as having made written factual findings for denial of the petition before you, and these findings were supported by evidence in the record reviewed by the staff. The findings for denial identified by the district include numerous ones identified here. Some of them include that the petition presents an unsound educational program, which is one of the identified allowed findings, as well as that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. And there are other findings noted here that we can go into more detail about if requested. And so then we look at the charter schools, petitioner's allegations against specifically the district first. The petitioner alleges that the abusive discretion by the district was due to the district adopting findings for denial that were unlawful, as well as the district adopted findings that were entirely lacking in evidentiary support. Those are the terminology. With regard to the county, there are more allegations. And the charter petitioner alleges that the county, the denial was without any written findings and was therefore unlawful, and that there were written findings that did not match verbal findings, as well as there was, the findings were lacking in evidentiary support. Then as allowed, the district that denied can submit a written opposition. There's a lot of back and forth, as you can see from the summary. And the district did submit a written opposition, the county did not. And then with regard to the district's opposition, the district did state that their findings were lawful, as well as supported by evidence, and they elaborated in the documentation reviewed by CD. This reiterates that we reviewed the documentary evidence to ensure when we made a recommendation to you today that it was based on the fact that we found the evidence supported in the record, as well as looking at the law to ensure that the review determined they were not unlawful findings. So I have sort of repeated the basis, but wanted to give you some specifics in this slide. And so with regard to the unsound educational program findings, some of the details relate to an insufficient description or detail about instructional schedules, specifically about staffing plans specifically, as well as a lack of information regard to transitional kindergarten specifically. With regard to the demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program finding, the areas that were looked at by CDE staff related to projected facilities cost findings made by the district, as well as the school's projection of attendance percentage relative to the district. Finally, with regard to the district findings, the petitioner's appeal is challenging the district's conclusions. That's why we're here today. And the petitioner requests that the state board exercise independent judgment and essentially re-review the evidence in place of the district. With regard to the county's denial, the county did not make written factual findings. And at this time, the CDE does not recommend affirming the decision of the county. And if you have questions about that, I'm happy to elaborate. In sum, CDE, based on its review of the entire record, the back and forth, the written opposition, et cetera, the CDE recommends that the state board today affirm the district's determination to deny the New Pacific School, Yuba City charter petition. And it's based on our analysis of the documentary evidence, documentary record, which is supported by the evidence. And the CDE recommends that the state board not affirm the county's decision. And I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, well, at this point, I want to open the public hearing. And we do have the public comment slide up again. We are going to be hearing from, and the time of the public hearing opening is 11:44 a.m. We'll hear first from the petitioners, then we'll have 10, who will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. We'll then hear from the District and County Office of Education. They'll have a combined 10 minutes to make their presentation. After the presentations, we'll open up the phone line for public comment from individuals who are not part of either presentation. And so I'm going to ask the petitioners to please come forward. And you may begin.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and the State Board of Education. My name is Paul Kiefer. I am the Executive Director of Pacific Charter Institute for 20 years, actually. And I also sit as a trustee for Sacramento County Board of Education, trustee Area 3, and I've been in that position for six years. We're really pleased to be here, and we are very glad that this is, this opportunity is open to us. To begin the presentation, just to review what we'll be covering, we'll be covering PCI, the New Pacific Schools, and specifically, New Pacific School, Yuba City, the charter petition appeal, and then finally, the request of the SBE. Pacific Charter Institute is a nonprofit public benefit corporation started by educators in Sacramento in 2005. We operate six charter schools with six learning centers, two site-based schools, and 11 academic programs. In fact, we actually have a charter school, Sutter Peak Charter Academy, located in Sutter County, which is one of the higher-performing schools in the county. New Pacific School, Yuba City, would be a small, project-based, personalized learning school serving grades TK through 12, opening in the fall of 2024. If approved, the school would open with 100 students, serving TK through 5. Why even consider us? Well, certainly, one of the things we've been really charging head is early literacy, and it will be reflected in our CATS scores as well. But our goal of 100% students in the second grade rating at grade level, we continue to strive towards that. And this last year, we actually had 80% of our students at one of our schools reach that goal. So we are far and away attacking a root cause of issues that go down the road, which is early literacy, and we're proud of that work that we're doing. During COVID, this gives a clear example. Even though many were suffering from learning loss, we actually saw growth in our learning. And that goes to our focus on really discrete learning goals for the students, including early literacy. So while all this has been happening in the backdrop of this appeal, we've opened two New Pacific Schools. The first one was opened in Roseville, under the Roseville Joint Union High School District, which is a high-performing district in California. They opened the school because they knew their families had need for more choices, certainly post-pandemic. But this was opened in 2022. So while others were leaning back, Pacific Charter Institute and our educators were leaning forward for our families. And then recently, this year, we were approved by Folsom Cordova Unified School District. And we are now open with 103 students. We wanted to open with 100. And it's an amazing, it's an amazing program that we feel the community really loves to have because it's everything that you were talking about with community schools, about parents and the students being first in the decision-making. That's absolutely what we do. And that's why we're not struggling to find students or families. And so with that, I'd like to pass this to Janelle and have her speak to the particulars that you'll be really discussing today.
Thank you, Paul. And good morning again, President Darling Hammond and board members. Janelle Rulie again with the offices of Young Money and Core. You know, as we stated in our public comment that was posted last week, what we are asking the state board to do here today is to apply the law that was on the books at the time that this charter school submitted its appeal. I was reminded, just listening to the CDE's staff report, that the ACCS heard it under the law that was in place at the time that we submitted the appeal. The law The law drastically changed five months after this school submitted its appeal. And, and we're asking you to apply the law that was in place at that time, and then to take the step of reversing the county's decision to deny this school. There's precedent for you to do this, for you to follow the law that was in place at the time. And that precedent is from July of 2020. So Assembly Bill 1505 became law in the middle of, of a school year. Most of its provisions became effective July 1. Your meeting was a couple of weeks later. During that meeting, you applied the pre-AB 1505 law. We're asking for the same consideration here today. I want to emphasize New Pacific School, this is the only time you're going to hear this request. We're, this is the only school in this boat. You're not going to have a ton of people asking you to do this. This is just this once. So charter schools have had to play from behind on every single abuse of discretion appeal, as the CDE and the state board's legal interpretations have evolved over time. The very first abuse of discretion that the CDE allowed to get to you was filed, was submitted in February of 2022. It wasn't until the end of June of that year that the CDE first revealed its definition of what abuse of discretion even is. So we were four months behind and had to guess at what the standard might be before we even knew what we had been judged against. For all three of the appeals last summer, the state board applied the, the old standard, the AB 1505 standard. And that standard, in every single CDE staff report, was you had to find an abuse of discretion by the district or the county or both. So that was the case. There was one appeal during the July meeting, two appeals during the September meeting. You had to apply the same standard for all of those. So you could, you could reverse by the, you could reverse the denial by the district or by the county or by both. And then against that backdrop, and with Assembly Bill 1505 as applicable law, New Pacific submitted its appeal in February of this year. So it's been a long time coming for us to be here. In June, so, so that was February, right? In June of this year, late June, I think it was on a Saturday, the legislature first revealed Senate Bill 114. And this was the, that year, this year's education trailer bill. There was a flurry of activity around that and from the court. So the first time that SB 114 came forward was the first time that anybody had any idea that there might be a change to this standard. The, the trial court in the Napa Valley Unified lawsuit against the state board, their decision came down five days later, holding that the state board had reversed its discretion, sorry, state board had abused its own discretion in reversing the denial of Maya Comas. On July 10th, Governor Newsom signed SB 114 into law, substantially changing the appeal standard from abuse of discretion by the district or county or both to now an abuse by, by both of them, an "and" standard. So with all of this tumult, New Pacific felt like it had no choice but to, to ask for a delay. And so that's why we did. I want to be really clear here that SB 114 changed the law. The law was one thing, and now it's different. It, it was a change. Please don't be misled that this is a mere clarification. It's just demonstrably untrue. Before SB 114, the appeal standard was either/or. The conjunction "or" requires a choice between two or more issues, either this or that. Now, the appeal standard is both "and," both the district and the county, "and" is an additive conjunction connecting two or more items. As you can see, the state's legislative council, so the non, nonpartisan entity that is designed or empowered to write up state bills, state laws, sees SB 114 as a change in law. So where they say this bill would instead, they are explaining a change in law. It's a fantasy to argue that the new both-and standard clarifies an either-or standard. They're, they're just not the same. The Sutter County Board, as you've heard from CDE, did abuse its discretion in this particular appeal. So I want to emphasize that county staff recommended approval of this charter. So the district had denied, county staff recommended approval. Staff and council gave their board a couple of different resolutions to consider. One of them had blank lines to fill in if the board wanted to deny. The board just declined to fill in those, those blank lines. And they said, well, you know, what we'll do is we'll just email each other what the findings are later. They did, they sent around emails after the fact, but those were never approved by the board. Those never came back to the board for an action. This is even more blatant than what Napa County did. I want to emphasize again what the CDE is saying, which is to not, they, they recommend that you do not affirm the action of the county. The, the county's action really was a stunning disregard of the law. And we ask that you just please do not let this stand. Please do not send a message to the field that it's okay for school districts and counties to just ignore what the law says. Please do not condone this action. The district as well abused its discretion. We, we strongly believe this. We've proven it up time and again, and I'll, I'll just say it one more time. In the abuse of discretion standard that the state board adopted or the CDE adopted, two, there are five prongs. Two of them are unlawful or entirely lacking in evidentiary support. We find that the district's findings hit both of those standards. So some of them were unlawful, some of them were entirely lacking in evidentiary support. The district's findings were largely speculative, and they were sort of complaints about things that might or might not happen in the future. That isn't a factual finding. They, they really needed to, to do the work of connecting, here's something in the charter, and here's why it's, you know, unlawful or, or meets one of the reasons for denial. They didn't do that work. We are asking you today, once again, to apply that was in place at the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll hear from the district and county office of education, who have combined 10 minutes as well.
Good morning. I guess it is still morning. My name is Lisa Mori with Fagan Freeman in Full Frost, and I represent the Yuba City Unified School District on this appeal. And I'm here with Superintendent Doreen Assumi. And we are here to request that the state board affirm the clear and direct findings of the CDE staff on the petition submitted by New Pacific School Yuba City. You know, acknowledging that we're sharing these minutes with the Sutter County Board of Education representative and respecting the fact that the CDE staff has gone through an exhaustive analysis of the district's findings on the petition and found them to be not only lawful, but also supported by evidence in the record. I won't belabor the analysis that's already been provided by Ms. Park and the staff at CDE. But I want to be clear that the district disagrees with the assertions made by Ms. Rulie here regarding the status of the law and the, the standard of review that's applicable to the SBE. The SBE has been applying the standard, applied in SB 114, as well as the higher most deferential standard of view, of review when it comes to an abuse of discretion to charter petitions before it within the past many months. Notably, the petitioner with regard to the district's findings has indicated solely that it, it felt as though the petition findings, or actually, the governing board's findings were unlawful, and that they were entirely lacking in evidentiary support. That statement in of itself is extraordinarily a high standard, that it's entirely lacking in evidentiary support. The CDE staff could not find one item set forth in the district's board's findings that was in fact contrary to the law. With regard to lacking in evidentiary support, the staff report prepared by CDE, and that's before you, goes through with detail and specifically identifies all of those areas, which were many. This is not a, a single finding to support denial, but a numerous findings on the behalf of the district board that were well-supported in the record. With regard to, with regard to the issues that were highlighted by Ms. Park, and one of the points that Ms. Rulie made was that potentially this was the district indicating things or having concerns about things that may or may not occur. Well, that in and of itself is a significant concern and issue with regard to a petition which is supposed to be the charter, the operating document, the definition and guiding principles, and the how in which the charter school is going to be operated. In this instance, with regard to New Pacific Yuba City's charter petition, the staffing plan, there was a distinct lack of evidence about how they were going to be actually implementing this extremely aggressive and heavily, you know, it requires a lot of work on the field, on the ground by staff in order to implement project-based learning in something that's been described as a classroom-based setting, but which there are really no classrooms. How that dovetails with the requirements in the education code around implementing the adult-to-student ratios for transitional kindergarten was completely unaddressed in the petition. How you're providing, how they were going to be providing physical, physical education, particularly given the lack of any information regarding facilities. And that moves into issues that the district had specifically with regard to its financial statements and its financial documents. Not only did the district feel it was based on inflated projected revenues based on an extremely high attendance rate, which does not reflect the attendance rate in the district, and particularly concerning, given the target population that this charter school is seeking to serve. Attendance and issues with access to school and getting to school are literally the, the concerns and the challenges faced by the students that they're proposing to serve. And therefore, a 97 high-plus ADA percentage on which they're basing revenues is just completely unreasonable. That finding in and of itself is certainly compelling with regard to supporting the district's findings. The lack of information with regard to facilities and the complete inability for the district staff to be able to evaluate whether or not the projections with regarding expenditures, not only for like things like tenant improvement, but facilities in general and location, were also extremely concerning to the board. I won't go into any further detail with regard to what's already replete in the record in the interest of time and the representative from the Sonoma, excuse me, the Sutter County Board of Education. But on behalf of the Yuba City Unified School District, we urge you that you do in fact have the authority, and frankly, the obligation, to affirm the district's findings to deny the petition, which would be sufficient under the law as it currently stands, and which is applicable to the State Board of Education, to deny the petition for Yuba City, New, New Pacific Yuba City. Thank you.
Well, excuse me, it is good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to talk to this appeal. I'm June McJunkin. I'm the president of the Sutter County Board of Education. The Sutter County Board of Education denied the petition based on a number of concerns with the petition. Various basic requirements appeared to be met. However, items about our community and how outreach was conducted remained. The petition itself was obviously a copy of one used in Sacramento County, since the reference to Sacramento County was still included in the text in several places. We have to wonder what about due diligence of the petitioners that a document like this is presented as representing the petitioners. Sutter County is a diverse community. We have high concentrations of Spanish and Punjabi-speaking families. The petition noted that Spanish and English information would be provided, but there was no mention of Punjabi. Earlier in the petition, petition percentages of our Punjabi, percentages of our Punjabi population were, were noted. When questioned about this omission, the solution was to add it to the growing list of items to be fixed by an MOU. There was also concerns expressed about the description of small school environment. The descriptions presented for classroom size would not meet the student-to-state ratios under current law. In the appeal to the state board, the petitioner noted that they felt that our board abused our power. We did make mistakes, no doubt. Perhaps it should be considered that there is abuse of power from petitioners. The expectation is that Sutter County Board should automatically accept a document that leaves questions and has issues that need a memorandum of understanding of some length to correct. It was noted that accepting this document, its current, in its current form, would set an unwise precedent in our community. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you both for the presentations. And we want to be sure to open up the public comment queue. And we should put the public comment slide back up for that purpose. Thank you very much. Members of the public wishing to provide comment can do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the access code shown on this slide that is appearing now. Are there any speakers signed up to comment in person?
There are four people signed up. Please line up at the microphone in the order I call your name. Angela Steagle, Eric Garber, Nicholas Watson, Nancy Bean.
Good afternoon, SBE members. My name is Angela Steagle, still, and I'm a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association. AB 1505 established an abuse of discretion standard, which is the most deferential standard of review. And under this process, the state board must give deference to the decisions of the governing board of the school district and the county board of education to deny the petition. SB 114, the budget trailer bill passed earlier this year, clarified that the CDE and SBE's interpretation of AB 1505, which you have consistently applied in every single appeal that has come before the state board since the implementation of 1505, was correct. An abuse of discretion must occur at both levels of review to overturn the denials of the local education agencies. The documentary record clearly outlines that the denial of PCI was the outcome of robust local analysis, deliberation, and governance by the Yuba City Unified School District Board. CTA urges the SBE to affirm the local decision of the Yuba City Unified Board and deny PCI's abuse of discretion appeal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Garber, and I'm actually the principal of New Pacific School in Roseville. And I just want to add to the conversation from what could probably be the most important question you should be considering is, well, what happens when a charter is turned into a school? What does that school actually look like? And I'm really happy to say that out of all the innovations that we brought together, the innovation that's made the biggest difference that I know and I guarantee that we brought to all the communities that we go to is that we're empathetic listeners. And that's what provided this community school that we've developed in Roseville, which our partner, the Roseville Joint Unified School District, they're a partner with us, and they're a very successful district. But still, there were 100 kids last year that found us that were not happy with their current lives as students, as scholars. And we provided that because we built our school around their needs, both academically, behaviorally, personally, and met their family needs directly. And we, we tried to build a school. We had this great model before we opened. And we learned, we had to throw it out the window after day one because it wasn't built around our students. Day two, we started building a school around our students. And so now that we've learned that, we've opened another school that started even before we built the plans to start getting to the families, weeks before, months before the school opened, to build a school that met their needs, their cultural needs, their personal needs, their academic needs. And so we really did build a school around individual student needs, individual community needs, individual teacher needs as well, too. So it is a very flat system in decision-making that listens to every stakeholder in the entire system, including our neighbors, that we, we love to be a part of their neighborhood. And I know we've made their community stronger. And they're very happy with us. They even throw our soccer balls back and wave to us when they walk by.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Really happy to add this to Yuba as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Nicholas Watson from the California Charter Schools Association. CCSA strongly supports New Pacific. This is a high-quality charter school operator. It's already operating high-quality schools. They submitted a perfectly valid petition, which was subject to abuse of discretion by both the district and the county. We'd like you to consider, again, that the Charter Schools Act favors the creation of charter schools. favors the creation of charter schools. AB 1505 preserved a viable appeal path through the county to the State Board. For both of these laws to remain effective, the State Board needs to step in when clear abuses of discretion occur and support high-quality charter schools. You have another opportunity to do that here this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. We hope you take advantage of that and approve this petition. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Bean. I'm the principal at New Pacific School, Rancho Cordova. We opened our doors on August 14th of this year, and we are creating a fantastic school community. I have a great teaching staff and support staff that we're 100% on board with creating this school and are doing a wonderful job. As Principal Garber stated, many of our scholars are coming to us because they had bad experiences at their prior schools. And in some cases, some of my scholars have never been to school. They've been homeschooled all along. These families came to us with their stories, with their hope, bringing their kids in the hopes of finding a place where they could thrive. And we are providing that. We have a great relationship with our sponsoring district, Folsom Cordova Unified. Recently, the superintendent and some of the other high-level school members, as well as one of the school board members came to visit. They went into every classroom and spent some time, and they gave us some great feedback that was very positive. Thank you.
There are four callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now. Good afternoon, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Cassie Nancy. I'm calling on the California School Employees Association to urge the State Board to affirm the decision of the Yuba City Unified School District to deny this charter petition. As the SBE just heard, it's clear that Yuba City thoroughly analyzed the petition and ultimately determined, based on evidence and facts, that this petition did not constitute a sound educational program. I'd also like to stress that SB 114 was always the clarification of existing law, not a change. And that's evidenced by the fact that the State Board asked State Board Counsel to clarify that it's always been their opinion that you need to find an abuse of discretion at both the district and county level. So I'd like to stress that and, again, urge the State Board to affirm the decision of Yuba City Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller with the last four digits, 0484. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, President Darling-Hammond and State Board members. My name is Anne Swinburne. I'm with the California Teachers Association. I want to reiterate that the State Board of Education and your counsel have always interpreted AB 1505 the same way that SB 114 interpreted it. This is not a new interpretation, the way the petitioner's counsel said. And I wanted to read a quote from the September 15th, 2022 State Board meeting, where former State Board of Education Counsel Judy Sias said, "It is our opinion that you will need to find an abuse of discretion at both the district and the county level." Because otherwise, since both of the determinations at both levels were de novo, then if you determined there was not an abuse of discretion at once, then the charter school did receive a fair and impartial hearing on the record. So it is our interpretation that the abuse of discretion has to be at both levels. There are numerous examples of quotations from State Board members.
Thank you, caller. Next caller with the last four digits, 5102. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, State Board. My name is Seth Mulder, and I'm actually a parent of a student at the Roseville location. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'd just like to give you the perspective of a parent with a child who had a difficult time fitting in. We went to multiple schools. Our local public school, a local Montessori, and a local charter, to no avail. And then finally, thankfully, you know, came across New Pacific, where she's now flourished. Instead of, you know, having difficulties getting her in the car to go to school every morning, she's now excited to go. I mean, it's been a world of difference. We no longer have to force her. She is more than happy and has been a transformative experience for her, both, you know, socially, emotionally, and academically. Whereas before, despite her intelligence and ability to learn, I mean, the environment that she was in, just it wasn't allowing her to excel. And, you know, just simply not all schools are, or I'm sorry, not all kids are kind of built the same and learn the same and having the opportunity to explore other options. I feel it's imperative. And I would like to reiterate, we are so thankful to found New Pacific. And I would urge you to support their expansion to Yuba City. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller with the last four digits, 1529. You are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hello, my name is Peggy Costa, and I am a custodian in the Yuba City Unified School District. The unified, the Yuba City Unified School District did a thorough job analyzing the petition and adopting written factual findings to deny the petition. It is the job of the State Board to determine whether or not both the district and the county abused their discretion, not substitute your judgment on whether the petition should be approved or denied for that of the district and the county. It is clear that the district carefully and thoroughly carried out their job under the law, and no abuse of discretion exists. You should deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 18.
Thank you very much. Given that there are no further public comments, I will hereby close the public hearing at 12:15 PM. We'll begin board discussion. I'd first like to ask our liaisons, Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken, if they'd like to make some initial comments. Vice President Glover Woods?
Thank you, President Darling-Hammond, and thank you to all who spoke during the public hearing and those who provided public comment on this item. As we begin to engage in discussion on this item, I just would like to bring back to the forefront for the board the charge that we have in front of us, knowing that we are to affirm if we feel that there has been abuse of discretion at the district and county level. If we determine that that has not happened, or that abuse of discretion has happened at both of those levels, then we would be able to reverse the decision and would need to be able to point to why that is. But again, I just want to lift up the, again, the charge that is in front of us, which is, again, we would need to find an abuse of discretion at both the district and the county level in order to reverse the decision that has been made.
Member Olken, do you want to add some thoughts?
I'm going to hold my comments for now. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we're now open for board discussion. Is there any further discussion of the issues? Member Olken, this may be your opportunity. If you have other comments, and I will then make some comments myself.
Okay. I guess I want to just start by saying what a weighty role this is for us in that the opportunity for creating great opportunities for our students in the state is important. And at the same time, I know we are bound by very clear direction from the law about what our role is. And so just, you know, my comment is that while I know I'm obligated to follow the law and will affirm the findings of the district, I think it's also very important for me to voice my disappointment and frustration with this appeal. As we heard today, CDE is not recommending that we affirm the findings of the county board because they did not follow the process for charter authorization as defined by law. And I think it's essential that in order for our communities to have confidence in government and in boards, in order for our students and families to have as many great opportunities as possible, we have to follow clearly defined processes that are fair and transparent. And I think in the case of, I think the record shows that in the case of the county, that didn't happen. And so while that doesn't change, I think, ultimately, what our job is in terms of the vote, I think it's important that as we move further into this, you know, into, as we continue to move forward, that at every level, boards are taking their responsibility seriously. They're learning about what the process is, what's required of them. There are lots of opportunities for folks to learn about how to follow the law and do the process correctly. And I just, I would feel remiss not putting it out there that this was, that I'm disappointed and frustrated in how this, what are, in how this went down.
Yes, Vice President Glover Woods?
I have a question for CDE. In the review of the findings that the district had and the response that the petitioners had to that, I just wanted to clarify that in the documentary record, as you, as CDE reviewed the documentary record based on the findings, am I correct in understanding that the documentary record, the evidence in the documentary record supported what the district findings are?
Thank you. And so we looked at each of the findings. We didn't stop at one because procedurally, that's all we needed. We looked at all of them. We looked at the entire record. And as the district council mentioned, there were several. And the CDE staff went into each one without stepping into the shoes of the district. We did not want to undo their review, but we were able to support, through the documentary evidence, why a finding existed, that it was lawful, supported by the evidence identified by the district as part of their review. So we didn't step into their shoes, but we did look over their shoulder and make sure, made sure multiple findings were supported by evidence that we could point to, specifically as to each finding.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, you know, again, to maybe somewhat link to Member Olken's comments, I just want to remind the board that, again, the charge in front of us is not to judge whether the findings are what the findings should be or not be, but to confirm and affirm that there is evidence in the documentary record to support whatever the findings are. But we do not have the leisure or the luxury, if you will, to make a decision as to whether those findings needed to be in place, if there's evidence in the documentary record to support the district's findings.
I'm going to build on those comments and make a couple other comments and maybe try to move us towards a motion. So, you know, we've already established that we have to find an abuse at both levels if we were to reverse the decision. We must look at whether the district's findings were, the phrases entirely lacking in evidentiary support. And we're not supposed to exercise independent judgment in weighing or reweighing the evidence that's before us. You know, so, for example, for those who looked closely into the record, as I did, the district considered the budgetary information submitted by the charter to be unrealistic to support a growth trend giving attendance issues within the district and unrealistic for sufficient staffing to support in-person learning for all the grades proposed. They use their experience of enrollment and attendance in that. The charter has its own experience that it brings to the table, but we do not adjudicate which of those two sets of presumptions or facts is correct. The district noted in its findings that the school proposed to only hire three full-time teachers for the first year to support its multiple grades. The charter school made the point that there were four additional paraprofessionals that they were going to use. Again, we're not permitted, in our role, to exercise independent judgment about the evidence and, you know, whether the, one perspective or another perspective is the right one to bring to bear. We are instructed that the district needs only one factually grounded reason to deny a charter, and that is sufficient to support its decision, whether we agree, you know, with that decision or not. There are some other matters where the district board made a finding, for example, about the sufficiency of the program descriptions in each area of the curriculum. And again, you know, there were back and forth about that between the district and the charter. CDE did find, and I agree with them, that the district's finding that the petition did not contain a sufficient number of signatures under Section 47605A is not supported by the documentary record because the signature requirement can be met either by sufficient parent or teacher signatures. And so there, sometimes the factual findings are not in accord with the law. And in that context, we can, you know, flag the fact that that is not something that is agreed with. But because there is some factual evidence in the documentary record, provided in support of at least one of the district's findings, to deny the petition, I do believe we must vote to affirm the district's findings, to uphold the denial of the charter petition. I do feel compelled to note that it's troubling that the documentary record does not show that the county adopted any findings when it denied the charter petition at its meeting. Because the district findings are sufficient to affirm the denial, we do not need to reach the question of whether the allegations regarding the county constituted an abuse of discretion. But the law does require that boards make written factual findings specific to the particular petition, setting forth specific facts to support one or more of their findings of denying a petition for a charter school. And despite this requirement, the documentary record does show that the county submitted its written findings after the fact, not in the meeting, outside of the meeting that, where it should have presented them. Furthermore, the petitioner had no opportunity to respond to the findings for denial since the Sutter County Superintendent of School Staff Report had previously recommended approval of the charter. So this is very troubling, and it does undermine faith that a charter petitioner will receive due process. Had there been evidence in the documentary record that would support that the district also engaged in these types of procedural irregularities, my vote would be different today. But there is no support in the documentary record to find that the district acted in an arbitrary manner so as to deny the charter petitioner due process. So I believe the law does require us to vote to uphold the decision of the district and to reject the claim of abuse of discretion. Are there any other comments from members of the board before we go to a motion? Yes, Member Yoshimoto Tauri?
I wanted to make, thank you for that explanation. That was helpful. I just want to make one comment and also agree that I know there's training out there for both the LEA level review and the county level review. But I do hope people take advantage of that so that in the future, when these come to State Board, we have sufficient documentary evidence from both levels. I do think, I just wanted to make a comment that I think when, also when districts review charter school applications, that sometimes districts are looking at charter school applications from a very, maybe a district lens or a traditional lens. And oftentimes, charter schools may have an innovative approach. And so there were a couple instances here where I note that there might have been, for example, in this particular instance, when the charter school isn't grouping by grade level or isn't grouping by age, that that was a concern on the district's part. And/or that the leader in me isn't teaching standards. That program wasn't designed to teach standards. So I think that also, that for me reinforces the importance of training and the importance of professional development for the reviews as they go forward. But I understand what you just said, Dr. Darling-Hammond, and thank you for that.
All right. Thank you very much. Shall we move to a motion? Member Glover Woods?
Thank you. I move that we affirm the determination of the UBA City Unified School District to deny the petition to establish the charter.
Member Lewis? Thank you very much. Any, yes. Yes, I was about to say, is there any further discussion of the motion?
Sorry, I just understood the CDE motion to not only be to affirm the school district determination, but also to have no affirmation of the county one. Is that part of?
I don't, do you want to put the motion up in front of us just so that we all have it?
It would be to, the motion before you from the CDE recommendation would be to affirm the district's denial of the UBA City, New Pacific School-UBA City charter petition. There would not be any kind of affirmation of the county findings as part of this motion.
Okay, shall we proceed? All right, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. Any position, no any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. I know these are difficult decisions, and we appreciate all of those who called in, the petitioners, the sincerity of the district staff, and the process that everyone engaged in. And I'd now like to take up Agenda Item 19, which is general public comment. Public comment is invited on any matter that is not included on the printed agenda, and members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so in person or by calling the numbers shown on the public comment slide.
I'd like to make a public comment, please.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Miles Timson. I'm a math teacher from San Diego. I've been teaching math for over 12 years, and from what I've observed, a lot of the material in the California Math Standards is not useful for students, and there are a lot of important topics we're not teaching our students. I think we should, I've come to the conclusion, we should include personal finance in our math courses, how to make a budget, how to buy a house, how to file your taxes, credit cards, student loans, retirement accounts. These topics aren't part of our math courses, and I think they should be. I want to be part of the solution on this issue. Next time we, next time you write the math standards, I'd like to be part of the group that works on the next version of the math standards. I think personal finance in schools is a very important topic, so I recommend we revise the math standards sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And doing one of the comments we heard earlier in the meeting from our student advisors.
And we do have one caller in the queue. Good afternoon. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Arushi Garg, and I'm a junior at Canyon Crest Academy, San Diego. Last year, a friend tried to commit suicide, so I decided to do some research about mental health issues. I found that one in three American teens have mental health issues, but three in five teen girls have mental health issues. One of the causes of mental health issues is sleep deprivation. The California government created a law so that high schools now start later, but middle schools are now starting earlier. So I wondered, is sleep deprivation not a problem in middle school? I conducted a survey and found that more than 72% of middle schoolers are sleep deprived, and 80% of students are unaware of the health implications of inadequate sleep. And boys are consistently getting more sleep than girls. The main cause of sleep deprivation in teens is hormonal changes due to puberty. So by only addressing the problem in high school, a health inequity is created because girls go through puberty first and are therefore overlooked by the solution. In order to address the health inequity and the root cause of sleep deprivation, I recommend that the California Educational Board consider adding a sleep chapter to the existing health curriculum in middle and high schools, much like the current health curriculum, which makes teen pregnancy far less prevalent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 19.
Thank you for those very useful comments. And with that, I now adjourn our November meeting at 12:34 PM. Thank you all.